Okay, thank you and welcome to the November eighth, we're in November eighth already, 2023 Village Board meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice of all.
Just give us a few minutes, Mayor. We have a few things to address first. Okay, the minutes of September 5th, 2023, September 26th, workshop. Any corrections, changes?
No correction or no changes.
Okay, we're good. So on a motion to approve those minutes, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And also, next is comments from the floor, on the agenda items only, and you're able to speak after on other, other things. But right now, it's just agenda items. Nothing right now? Okay. So with us today, on Zoom, we have the Mayor of the Village of Avon.
Hello, I'm Freeman.
Okay, I'm Teresa Nicobacca, the Village of Buchanan Mayor, and we'll go down the line and everyone will introduce themselves. Bob, Mr.?
Bob Wheeler, trustee.
Anthony Cafficotti, trustee.
Dan Stewart, trustee.
Steve Laker, trustee.
So thank you for joining us today, Mayor. And if you would like to, we had purchased, and it's not three years ago, it's two years ago, a synthetic ice rink. For years, years back, we were able to flood our, our basketball court that we have at the pavilion, and we just haven't had the weather that would allow us to freeze the ice anymore. So we looked into buying this synthetic ice skating rink, and we've had it for two years. We purchased it for $36,000, and we were fortunate to have a very good corporate neighbor, Entergy. So through a grant through Entergy, we purchased the ice skating rink, and we've had it two years, and it would have been the third year this year. I have my opinions, but I would like to give you a few minutes to tell us about your Village of Avon and what you have with a skating rink there.
Thank you. Is my Park Commissioner?
I am here, I'm here, Tom, yes.
Oh, very good. Well, let me tell you a little bit about Avon if you would like, because when I was speaking with Marcus before, our similarities were amazing, and we would almost believe we're sister villages. We also have a full-time police department, six full-time members and some part-timers. We maintain our own fire department. We have our own water filtration system. We maintain our own wastewater facility on the mighty Genesee River. We are fortunate to have some major industries settle right here in the Village of Avon, which has helped us keep our tax base low, our tax rate low, and share our park system, which we have 95 acres of parks, and we maintain and mow 65 acres of parks. Right down the road, our major road through the middle of the village is Routes 5 and 20, which Route 20 is the longest contiguous highway in the United States from Boston, Massachusetts to Newport, Oregon. And so the traffic that comes through the village is pretty good. If the New York State thruway has any issues with weather, which would often do with lake effects snow, Routes 5 and 20 becomes the alternative route. We have a population of about 3,600 people in the town of Avon, which also outside the village has a population of about 3,600 people. So combined, we're about 7,200. And we are very fortunate to be in close proximity, just about 20 miles round numbers, to the city of Rochester. We really are a bedroom community, which I probably would suspect you guys are now, and most of our residents travel to Rochester to work in some of the, what used to be the largest corporations in America, Kodak, Xerox, Bosch and Lam. So we have done very well in Avon with a bedroom-type community. But as I mentioned earlier, Ein's Craft, which I grew up in Avon my whole life, so I still call it Bird's Eye, is stationed here. The only place in the world they make Cool Whip, the whip topping, dressing. They also, we have Gorilla, that are second plant in the United States. And we have Gray Metals, which produces ductwork for homes and industries that you see when you, in your basements. We have Starhead Light, which makes LED hazard warning lights on top of police cars, fire trucks, and whatnot. And it's very, very engaging businesses. They want to be involved, and we also, in our park system, have one of the oldest harness racing tracks in the United States. And with that, we have had many, many Shire States winners that have raced down in the Meadowlands and around for harness racing. So, pretty well-rounded community, and the Holiday Spectacular group of individuals pursued this ice skating rink grant a couple of years ago themselves, and nobody could believe you could have a synthetic ice. And I'm going to let Ms. Ashley Como speak to how she secured it and how popular it is, and why we would love to engage our arrangement with you guys.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for having us. Yeah, we're very excited to be here and kind of tell you a little bit more about our community and really, you know, and really what we're here for. So, the Holiday Spectacular is a grassroots group. We are a group of women who started off as just three, and we've grown to over 15 volunteers that we have today. We're not business owners, we're literally just members of the community who love to celebrate together. And we saw an opportunity to bring our community together during that special time of year. We just really didn't have anything that was going on. We've grown beyond our wildest expectations, as the mayor has alluded to, and last year, through a matching grant fund, as well as some of the sponsors that he just outlined, we were able to purchase a portion of a synthetic ice skating rink last year. With that money, we were also able to refurbish a 50-year-old skate house, which is located inside one of the parks that the mayor just mentioned. That skate house had been sitting unused, other than storage, for the last, you know, 15 years. So really, what was and I saw in that park, in that beautiful park, is now an active gathering spot for families throughout the year. We house basketballs, pickleball, volleyballs, all available for the community to use for free. And really, that skate house has allowed our skating rink to be successful. Part of the grant also allowed us to purchase ice skates. So, one of the core values that we have for the Holiday Spectacular is to afford any member of the community the exact same experience, no matter if they have a dollar in their pocket or a thousand dollars in their pocket. And so being able to have these types of facilities is really, is really very, very important to us. The amount of diversity within our community is expansive. So, and Western New York doesn't have the greatest weather. So, being able to get out and do something in, you know, the dreary months of, you know, the winter, in the skating rink has really allowed us to do that. So, with this expansion, you know, we're going to be able to host more families. We have, every Saturday, you go down there and somebody's skating on the rink. We have fire pits down there. We have, this expansion is also going to allow us to put games and tables inside that skate house, so that as families are skating outside, they can come in, they can warm up, they can bring their own, you know, lunch and sit down and have that. So, we sincerely thank you for working with us to allow this to happen. We have seen a tremendous amount of success. So, I have to say, my heart breaks a little bit for your community that you didn't see the same success, but, you know, we are very thankful that you are working with us on this opportunity.
And I think what we were lacking was the ice skating, with the ice skates to rent, or not to rent, but to have people have ice skates, because the skating season here has changed dramatically over the last, probably 20 years. So, I know when I was growing up, when I was a little one, everybody had skates. Everybody skated in the pavilion, but the weather changed here, so. So yes, you are getting it at a phenomenal price. Like I said, two years ago, we purchased it for 36,000, and I know the board has agreed to sell it to you for 12,000.
Yes, we thank you for that.
Very much.
So, any other, because I'm about to read the resolution.
I'm just thankful it's going to get good use, and it's going to a community that's going to utilize it. So.
I had originally hoped that we could give it a little more time, but the board has decided that, you know, to put it up, to sell it. So anyhow, I will read the resolution. Whereas the Village of Buchanan purchased synthetic ice and fencing two years ago, and whereas after two seasons, there has been limited usage of the synthetic ice, whereas the Village Board has determined that based on the low usage, that is, in the public interest to sell the synthetic ice and fencing, and whereas after a public process, the village received bids to sell the synthetic ice and fencing, whereas the village received a bid from an individual, however, the village has decided to sell the synthetic ice and fencing to the Village of, I say Avon, New York, and the Avon Holiday Spectacular due to a higher offer as well, as for the Village of Avon's public purpose and enjoyment, and whereas the Village Board has determined that synthetic ice and fencing is considered surplus equipment. Are we just declaring this surplus today?
Right.
Whereas after due diligence, the Board of Trustees, the Board of the Village Buchanan has determined it is in the public interest to sell the synthetic ice and fencing to the Village of Avon, New York, and the Avon Holiday Spectacular, and now therefore at Buzal, by the Board of Trustees of the Village Buchanan, that the synthetic ice and fencing is surplus, that the synthetic ice and fencing be sold to the Village of Avon, New York, and Avon Holiday Spectacular for a cost of $12,000, and as is conditions. Can I have a motion to approve this?
Aye.
I'm doing a motion to approve, and I'm sorry. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I am going to vote no on this. I just think, I would have liked to have given it another chance, and to sell it for $12,000, I think is an extremely good deal for you guys. So I wish you the best. I wish you the best with it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please find it in your heart to come up state and visit Avon and visit Letchworth State Park and Western New York, and we'd be happy to entertain you when you come.
Shall we bring our own skates?
We have some for you, don't worry.
Okay, all right.
I just wanted to emphasize the fact that the skate park and the skate house that the Park Commission has is not locked, and there are probably 30 pairs of skates, 50 pairs of skates in there?
Yeah.
That are available at the pleasure of the people when they show up. The same with the basketballs and the volleyballs are right there to use. So it's a well-maintained and well-respected facility. So I assure you, it's going to great, great use.
Great.
Good for you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, bye-bye. A motion, okay, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding parking spaces. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, what we are doing here this evening, I know AMS had asked the Village Board to look at the parking spaces that we had in our code and to change it to a different size. So that's what we're doing this evening. Are there any comments from the board members on this? We're going to change it, what, to a minimum of 18 feet and a minimum width of eight and a half feet?
Eight and a half by 18.
Yeah.
Right, it's a standard size.
From what I understand, that's standard in the industry. It's also standard in other municipalities, including the town of Portland. So we're just aligning ourselves with what is standard.
So basically, what we had was outdated. So this is bringing it into modern times, so to speak.
Any comments from the public? All right, so if there's no comments, oh, yes, Eileen?
Okay, so for the public to understand this, it was 18 feet, now it's going to be eight, or it was eight and it's now going to be 18.
It was 10 by 20.
Oh, 10 by 20. Oh, did I miss that? Did you say that? Was that?
No, I did not. No, I said the new, what the code is, and now what it's changing to.
So it's changing to what?
18 by eight and a half.
18 by eight and a half. And what does that do for the parking situation at AMS?
It doesn't change anything. They were going, correct me if I'm wrong, but they were going under the guidance that we, our code matched the standard in the industry, and it did not after further examination. And the board is just aligning themselves and making the code, you know, standard.
Okay, so.
So to speak.
Yeah.
When you go on site, on the website, and you look at AMS, those parking spaces are 18 by 8?
Correct.
And that will align with whatever the town has and whatever?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And same thing for future projects going forward.
But wouldn't that allow them to have more parking spaces?
No, that's what they aligned for originally.
Yeah, they did. It's on the plans originally.
All right, I just thought with the change.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know, if it gave them more, if it gave them less, if it, you know, they figured out that 18 by 8 already. So that's what's, if anybody looks at that plan, that's already there.
That's correct.
That's in their design.
Okay, that's, I just wanted the residents to know that, because.
But thank you for bringing up the questions, Eileen. We always appreciate you, you know, trying to clarify and ask questions.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the board before I read this? I did make a motion to close the public hearing? No?
No.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. So I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Whereas the resolution was duly adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Village Buchanan for a public hearing to be held by said Village Board at the Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan to hear all interested parties on a proposed local law amending Chapter 211 entitled Zoning to the Code of the Village Buchanan, and whereas notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official local newspaper, and whereas said public hearing was duly headed, held at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Village Board on November 8th, 2023 at 7:00 PM at the Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan, New York, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof, and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village Buchanan, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the Village of Buchanan to adopt said local law. Now be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan hereby adopts said local law number 92023, amending Chapter 211 of the Code of the Village of Buchanan, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the Village Clerk be and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting in the Local Law Book of the Village Buchanan, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of the State of New York. So on a motion, and can I?
I second that.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All righty. Okay, the next is, Marcus, if you want to go over this, this is a license agreement.
Correct. Yep. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is a license agreement with Westchester County to install a new tenor for the Police Department that will be shared for communication with the county police. It's at no cost to the Village. It'll be installed by the county, and we'll have access to better communication between the Police Department and the county for mutual aid, communicate with all the county and also all the other local jurisdictions. So.
And first responders.
And first, yeah, yeah. It does cover the Fire Department.
What?
Only Police Department.
It's not Westchester UMS and first responders?
No, no, just police, just police, just police. So that's the grant, the way they propose. The Police Chief supports it, and hopefully the board will go along with it as well. I know they had discussion with the liaison, Steve, Steve Laker, if you have any more to add, but the Police Department would like to have this, to have better communication. You'll get radios for the police cars as well.
Great, that's a good deal for us. Okay, so on a motion to approve this, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the next is a motion to approve the Workplace Violence Prevention Program. It's a policy that we'll be adopting. Marcus, would you like to review any of this?
Well, just to, it's to meet federal and state regulations, again, of workplace violence, to make people feel safe at the workplace, be able to report any kind of situation where they feel there's violence in the workplace. Again, to meet state and federal standards, also recommended by PERMA, who are our workers' compensation insurance carrier. We have the attorneys will review, we have PERMA review it. So this is something for the board to approve, and then we'll provide this to the employees as well.
And who are the employees reporting to?
They'll report to the Clerk Treasurer or myself, depending who they feel more comfortable.
Who's doing the training annually?
PERMA.
They're going to do it annually? Whenever it comes in.
Okay, so, on a motion to approve the Workplace Violence Prevention Program policy, can I have a second?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next is, we've interviewed somebody for the Deputy Treasurer position, and I think he's going to be a really good fit for the village. And so his name is Keith Douglas, and it will be effective November 15th. So next week, he will start here at the Village Buchanan. He does have a very good background, very good background in financial and auditing and things like that. So he comes here very experienced. So I'd like to make a motion authorizing the employment of Keith Douglas as Deputy Treasurer effective November 15th, 2023, at an annual salary of $80,000. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And the next, we have been without a recreation supervisor for a couple of months now, and I did fill in, and I was having a great time, Jackie. I had a lot of fun doing it. But we are hiring this evening our part-time recreation leader. And I don't know, did you want to say a few words, Jackie?
I would like to.
Sure, absolutely, come on up. Yeah, we, I had some fun. We did a movie night, so that's something maybe over the summer months you'd consider. We're working, and I'm going to talk to the board tonight about, and I'll work with you two, how our Christmas tree lighting is done.
Okay.
And also, we had last week, we had the trunk or treat, which is a lot of fun. So you'll, you'll be having all this fun now.
Okay, great.
We would all like to work with you.
Yeah. Oh, no, absolutely. No, no, no. But what with, because she's so new, I think what I'm saying is, since she's so new with the Christmas tree lighting, you know, we'll, you know, we're going to be meeting next week with the Beautification Committee, because they play a big role here with a lot of our events, the Beautification Committee. So this way, you'll get to know them better, and what the process has been, and however you want to change things up, you know, that's, that's up to you.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, I would like to, first of all, excuse me, thank you, Mayor Nicobacca, our Village Board, Marcus, and our Village staff for the opportunity to be your new Recreation Supervisor. I have a lot of ideas. I want to see a lot of change in our village activities, our camp, our village pool, and I am so looking forward to making those changes and working with every one of you. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. And Jackie, also, the Rec Advisory Committee will be gearing up very soon. So you'll also be working with them, and I, Steve, as soon as I have a date with them, for them to get started, a meeting here at Village Hall, I'll let you know.
Okay.
And we'll get them started, and.
And that's the Work Advisory?
It's a Recreation Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion authorizing the employment of Jacqueline Pasquale as part-time availability and part-time seasonal in the position of Recreation Leader at a rate of $28 an hour, effective November 13th, 2023. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Jackie.
Yeah. And we were fortunate at the 9/11 ceremony that the village sponsored this year. Jeremy Bassow had connected me with Erica, with the Treble Makers at the high school. So they were there for the 9/11 ceremony, and Erica has also agreed to come, as I've told you, at our Christmas tree lighting on the 3rd. So we'll have them there.
Well, I've already spoken as far as that's concerned.
Oh, come through my, come through my.
Oh, yeah, we're not going to be able to hear you too.
That's great, they're great.
Yeah, it was beautiful that day.
I reached out to our principal in the high school, because everything pretty much has to go through the principal, being a new principal, Ms. Gollins. She has reached out to the music department and Mr. Akresh, and they have reached out to me. They're going to work together to try to get a chorus and the carolers to come in and sing, and it's going to be something where we're going to want the children absolutely involved in the singing and the caroling this Christmas. I want to make it really special for them. I want them to see the change in our village, and I'm so looking forward to working with them. So they're all going to be reaching to me, reaching me and letting me know who we are getting. And I've offered them community service hours, because as we all know, CCD, they require community service hours. Some of these kids are going to college, requires community service hours, and it's something for them to get involved. And not only that, but it's something for them to see a change in our village, so that we can get more workers in the summer to come in and work for us instead of another camp. And they're looking forward to it, and we're looking forward to it, and we're excited about all the changes that are going to come by.
Good, you weren't even appointed, and you're off and running.
I'm running. You know me, I'm, I'm a woman of all trades.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's great, Jackie, thank you.
Good. Okay, we are going to authorize an employment of a part-time person. We had one part-time person that left, so we have a position open for seasonal help. So I'd like to make a motion authorize the employment of Alan Porter Jackson for seasonal help at a rate of $15 an hour, starting November 9th and ending December 21st. So can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Marcus and Bob, we're having a discussion on the village signs again. What do you have for us?
There was some discussion about, welcome to Buchanan signs. So we have some proposals I forwarded over, I think I forwarded to the entire board too, some options with different colors. At the workshop, we talked about it. So I can bring up what was brought up as some, as some options. So that's one option.
I like the center with our seal. I really, I like that.
Now, the top here, we're talking about, the top of the post, it can be gold, you could do different colors. So that's one option. Then we had, I think, let me see if I can move this out of the way for a minute. Then we had this option, which the, again, again, any color, you can pick any color, the price remains the same. It could be white lettering, blue, green, whatever the board prefers, but I want to just show you two different, with the white post or the blue post, or you can intermix it, talking to them, they can do any color, any rendering you would like.
It's carved lettering, correct?
Yes, carved, it's carved lettering, correct.
I thought that when we spoke with this, it wasn't carved lettering. The one with the blue sign, the blue background, carved lettering. I thought the other one was some kind of a special paint that they said they used.
Well, it's carved lettering, and when inside, they do the, they would do the paint inside. Yes, carved lettering, but inside it's actually painted, that's correct.
And the second sign is basically what we had before.
Yeah, what did we have? Geez, I don't remember, Bob, yeah?
Very similar, yeah.
Yeah, because blue is our color.
They didn't have the seal on top. That one there, the only thing I don't really like is the way that seal looks on there. It just kind of looks a little bit off. Something about, it doesn't really, it's almost lost in the, in the color blue. The sanitation department had to put a sign up, designate where they were, and this is the type of sign they put up. I did like it personally. My concern was, on the main drags, how dirty it's going to get. It's vinyl, they said it cleans very easily, but is that something we want to attach onto the highway department, to have the clean signs?
So you're thinking a darker color.
We're going to like, you're going with a gold color, or you could go with white lettering. So again, we could do any. so again, you can do anything you want.
I think that one sticks, my personal opinion, you know, everyone can be different, but I like...
This one we had in the past, and I believe we had the gold panels on top of the posts, not the...
Yeah.
Which kind of broke that up a little bit, give it a little bit more or something.
Well, it's a little bit of contrast, so it looks, you know...
Yeah, I think this one sticks out. The other one kind of...
The price is forty-three hundred dollars a sign, and five hundred dollars for installation.
And we're talking about getting three of them?
Well, originally it was three, plus there's the Carbone project happening, I was thinking that maybe you want to hold off until the construction is done there, and then determine where it's going to go, because I don't want to put it and have to move it through the construction, but the other two locations, we could definitely put them in whenever the board wishes to do so.
And those two locations would be?
One is Albany Post Road, right around where the Elgonquin little station is there, where the other one was, and the other one we talked about putting down by Lenz Cove when you enter from Peekskill.
Yep.
That location hasn't been exactly determined where yet, because we have to look a little bit closer to see what the right spot to put it is, I know that we talked about putting it in the island, I think the island's maybe a target that's going to get hammered.
Yeah.
Where it was in the past was actually on Peekskill's property, which would be the perfect spot for it, to be honest with you, because it's right before you make that curve. So I know that when we talked about it last time, we talked about doing it in between the trailway, where the three bollards are, and the entrance to Lenz Cove, somewhere in that area there, will probably fit pretty well.
But Bob, do you think, or board, do you think, in that area, when we did have one years ago, do you think a smaller size, because we didn't have a full size over by Lenz Cove?
They were all about the same size.
Were they? I just remember them being smaller.
Those were, this is actually a little bit bigger, this is six feet, probably, the sign is six feet, plus the post is forged on both sides, so it's going to put it, you know, six and a half feet, a little more than six and a half feet, where the other one was actually just about six feet from outside the post, outside the post.
Correct.
So this one is a little bit larger, but we could go smaller?
Well, the one by Lenz Cove, that's what I was talking about there, I don't know if we need...
We could go smaller.
Because we had a little, we had a little box over there that it was in.
Yeah, I agree with Theresa here, I think maybe over by Lenz Cove we go a little smaller, maybe get some pricing on a smaller sign, build a little planter, put it in a planter, like a box planter.
It'll protect it a little?
It'll protect it a little bit, and you could, then you give the ability to plant in this, one more thing for our beautification committee to do if they want, go a little smaller over there, I mean, just get the pricing on it. I think Albany Post Road, go with the six footer, you know, it looks better there.
Yeah, the two main entryways into the village.
I think that when we did speak with the beautification committee about these signs, that they were kind of preferring not to do planting.
Right, they don't want to do any plants there.
It's just more maintenance to do.
All right, but I think they should go in a planter anyway, in a box planter anyway, to protect the bases. I think it's better for us as well, for the long term, and you could actually fill the base with concrete.
Right.
To protect the legs, and then just cover it with topsoil. We have some members here of the community, I'd like to get some feedback, what do you guys think?
Hands up, how many like the blue or the white?
I like the blue, but I think it should be white letters.
With white letters. Blue with white letters?
Yeah, the hen hut colors.
Oh, good idea, that's good, yeah, yeah.
The blue, the blue is our color, the Village Buchanan.
The white letters.
I think the seal may look a little better with the white letters.
I don't like the white with the blue letters, I can tell you that, I like this sign better myself.
Seems to pop more.
So get us a...
Doesn't matter, the smaller size, we can check that out, but any color you want is the same price.
Yeah, let's...
Ask him for a copy, you mean, an example of the rendering of white lettering on the blue background?
Sure, the post, you want the post white or blue?
White.
White, okay. It's the lettering to white.
Right.
Okay.
And that'll make the seal a little better too, I think.
And I think Anthony is right, you got to put some type of a base there, because when the guys go out weed whacking, it's PVC, it'll get all broken up.
You can box in the whole thing.
Especially that PVC, weeks after time.
And put the legs in the box, and then, they'll be anchored in concrete, and it's easier for them for installation as well, because they can anchor it in concrete, more concrete.
Yep, okay.
Than just in the ground.
Okay.
And you know, I want to, I'll send to the board, I was going through Croton, they had like a little stone, it raised up just a little bit, it was like a couple of feet, but they had done stone.
Instead of railroad ties, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, because railroad ties get, after a while...
They deteriorate, yeah.
They rot and everything, so, something to think about, you know, maybe even the highway guys could do something with that.
Okay, all right.
I'll give them another project, right?
We'll just have to work with the company installing that, we're going to do it poured in concrete, whether they're going to do it or we're going to do it.
Correct.
And then that's going to increase the price.
I can ask them.
You know, we're going to put it in the ground, and then we're going to build a box around the legs.
Okay.
We're going to have to hire somebody to do that.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, so, this sign with white lettering, everything, okay, perfect.
And everyone agree to do the panel?
And I think the logo in the center.
And you want gold on the top of the post, you want gold or white?
Oh, the gold, like balls on the top?
Do you want gold on the top or on the post, or the way it is now?
Gold may not go there now, because the lettering's...
Everything's white now. Leave it the way it is?
Yeah, gold on the top.
What are they, the gold balls?
Why, you want gold balls, or do you want to stay with the white?
Could do white.
What does everybody think?
Could do white.
Gold?
Oh, boy, this is...
How many want gold? How many want gold?
White letters, you need to keep everything white.
Everything white.
Exactly.
All white, okay.
Yeah.
White panels, uniformity.
Good taste out there, okay.
They're happy they came tonight.
Yeah, a little input here, that's good, that's good, that's great. So, all right, Marcus is going to look into that further. I do have someone here that wants to speak, but I'll continue with the agenda. She was in the back, I didn't see her. Information from officers and departments, justice reports, September 2023, we have one of them is five thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars, and the other one is two thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. Police report, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor, for the month of September, there is a total of one hundred ninety-eight calls, forty-two moving summons, and eleven parking summons, twenty-one calls for service, five animal complaints, and forty-three property checks. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And highway report, Anthony?
Highway report, seventy-six tons of garbage, twenty tons of bulk dumpsters, three-point three-one tons of metal, twenty-nine yards of chips, the guys are very busy, they did a lot of catch basin cleanouts, marked out for a bunch of utilities that we had a lot of paving done, they fixed lights, they did a lot of stuff, they winterized the pool house. I also, in my report, I would like to put that I spoke to Scott, due to the sale of our synthetic ice rink, I spoke to Scott about trying to flood the pavilion once again, and we looked at it together, and it is, it is something that we could do, as long as the weather works out for us. If it doesn't, then we won't be able to do it. And that's it for the highway report.
Anthony, I would agree with you on that, because I've always said we should try to fill and see if it holds, because I believe it will hold water.
It will hold water.
When we get major storms, that pavilion is filled to the top when a bottle or a tentacle gets stuck in the drain.
No, it will hold water, I examined it, it will hold water, it just, it has to be cold enough.
Yep.
I'd like to ask Stella and Frankie to come up, our friend Frankie, and Mr. Bell. Coach, as they call him.
Retired now, right?
Retired now, I'm done now.
For now.
All done.
For real, this time.
They'll drag you back in somehow, John.
No, 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 no. John Baltroy, First Street, here on behalf of the Buchanan Running Club, and we just wanted to take the time to thank the village board, the mayor, and all the other people that were involved in supporting our 5K road race that was on Buchanan Day back in September. We had tremendous support, and Mayor, your idea of tying it in with the Buchanan Day was just fantastic, made it even better. So we'd like to thank our police chief, Shane Farrell, and all of our village police officers, they did, really did a great job in getting the roads closed off and keeping people safe. We had members of Buchanan Fire Department also helping out on the course, and from what I understand, we also had members of Montrose Fire Department out on the course helping us. The members of Cortland Ambulance Corps were there to support us, and also the Westchester County Police, and from my point of view, we had like, so much more support than I thought, it was like, it was amazing, it was really fantastic, and Steve was our, Steve Laker was our kind of liaison, and anytime I needed anything, just spoke to him and we worked things out. Just for a little information, we had seventeen, seventy-three registrants for the race, which was like more than double what we expected. We know we had some that couldn't show up, we had sixty-three finishers, and we had age groups represented from three to seventy-three, so it was a tremendous community event, and we just want to thank everybody for all you did to help support us there.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, I'm Stella, and this is Frankie.
Yep, that's Frankie.
Proud residents of Buchanan as well.
That's right.
And founding members of BRC, and John was the one that said we should come out and just say a few thank yous for people that we missed, because we, like, it was a very busy day, and we gave a lot of major thanks, but of course, we missed some people, and there were, like, the ones that John mentioned today, people that showed up that we didn't even expect to support us, so we just wanted to come in and say thank you again, and mention those people we missed.
Thank you, guys, it really, it really combined with a real community day.
Yes, yes.
And Frankie's going to say hello?
Frankie was brought upon request.
Oh, absolutely. Stella asked if she could come in tonight, I said only if Frankie comes.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Thanks for all your hard work. Wastewater Treatment Plant Report, treated water nine million nine hundred and thirteen thousand gallons, sludge removable, seventy-one thousand five hundred gallons, so they had some more extra water there, I guess, this month. Building Department. Oh. Got it?
I just had it marked up here. Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Let's see, Peter's been busy, he's always busy, he's here all the time, he does his job well. He's issued fifteen building permits, he's got, let's see, sixteen inspections that are required for newly issued permits out there, he's issued sixteen certificates of occupancies, and he's got a whole lot of other things here, he's always chasing people around, trying to get things caught up, so he keeps himself busy, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Planning Board Report, August twenty-fourth, received and filed, Zoning Board Report for September, received and filed, Buchanan Engine for September, that's Dan.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So for the month of September first to September thirtieth, they had zero structure fires, five EMS assists, three automatic alarms, and one mutual aid, for a total of nine alarms. And again, as you see in our newsletter, the fire department's always looking for volunteers, so we encourage anybody that's interested to please get in contact with our chief Bobby Outhouse, or one of the other officers over there, and they would be more than happy to have you become part of their family, so...
Dan, if I can just follow up on that a little bit, I have to step on you a little bit, we're actually looking for members that can come in at fourteen years old, too, we have a junior firefighter's situation, you can come in at sixteen, so there's a lot of opportunity for young kids that want to get involved, to see what it's all about when they get young, and see if there's something they want to continue on with their career, or just as a volunteer in the community.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Prosecutor's Report, received and filed, we'll be going into executive session to discuss a few things there. Attorney's Report, Stephanie, what do you have for us this evening?
I have three different things for executive session, I have one quick one, George wrote a memo, I think, to the board regarding the water purchase for Montrose and Peekskill, and after you read it, you'll have a better idea, but he suggested their budget, Montrose's budget is on the fifteenth, so he's suggesting that perhaps he and one or two of you, whoever's interested, meet with the folks that we met with last month, and discuss the best way to go. There's a surcharge they want to talk about, there's some fees per gallon, and obviously, we don't want to pay more than we pay, splitting it with Peekskill, right, so you'd like to save something, and they know that, and that was kind of the offer made, but George wants to follow it up this week, so I think you only have Monday or Tuesday.
Monday or Tuesday.
Correct, and just... It's just all public, again, it's all public, you know, we buy water from Peekskill and Montrose, we have an agreement with Montrose to purchase about sixty percent of the water from them, we've been buying about fifty percent of the water from them, so it would be fifty-fifty, so it's just a discussion of what, if you want to buy more than sixty percent, so the board really doesn't have to take official action at the next meeting, it's something that we can negotiate with them, and whatever the board decides, and they're willing to, well, modify the rate that we pay to try to keep the rate down, so, but the idea is, hopefully, is that we buy, maybe buy more water from Montrose, but don't spend more money than we're spending, but we'll be buying less water from Peekskill, so that's the discussion, and whenever you meet, we go with modified rate at any time with Montrose, so whatever works out for benefit for the village.
All right, and thank you for the memo you sent today, too. About that. Oh, George, I'm sorry, yes, George, our engineer, George.
Yep.
Marcus, Administrator's Report.
Couple, couple of quick things that we want to discuss is, the paving in the village is almost done for the season, they said they're going to do Henry Street before Thanksgiving, and that should be the last street. The alternately with Gallagher, according to George, based on the amount of work that has to be done, curbing, sidewalk, catch basins, that he doesn't recommend we move forward with that, temperature change, but they'll hold the price for next year, so they'll come in next spring and do it. We'll rebid again next year, if they're a little bitter on all the other projects, they can come and do additional streets as well, but all the paving should be done. On the sewer, even though there was more water coming in, the lining with the sewer work that we, project we did, actually reduced the flow, based on the same number of inches of rain, the flow actually went down substantially, so it seems to be working, so just wanted to report that. Let me see what else I wanted to talk about, oh, we talked about the signs before, but we missed the digital sign.
Oh, that's right.
So, we're going back and forth, again, if you want to go with the digital sign, if you want to make this, because I'm trying to, it took a long time to get a price from another company, took about, since July, if you want a digital sign, we got Stewart Signs for about twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars for the digital sign, if you want to go forward with that, that's the one I would recommend, that's the same sign that the library has, so you want to do a comparison of what it looks like. The other sign, there's not one around the area, from Signs Inc., and Signs Inc. actually buys it from a reseller, while Stewart Signs you're buying directly from the manufacturer, they're both US-made, the library is very happy with their sign, the software is actually included for the lifetime of the sign, by gaining from them too, which could be costly, so if the village does want, if the village board wants to move forward with that, again, they said the price is good to the end of the month, they tried to give a special deal, Stewart Signs, again, just bringing up, if you want to move forward with that, or you want to hold to the next month, I just let them know, the price might go up, but that's the discussion with Stewart Signs, depending what you want to do with that, we could discuss that. The other thing, again, we've had issues with two developments, I just want to put it on the record, we have the AMS project, and we have the Carbone Project, which is called Village Square, which is across the street, both of them will be in front of the planning board on November thirteenth, so in case anybody is interested to attend that meeting, AMS is a referral from the village board to the planning board for any comments. The Carbone Project with Village Square is totally in front of the planning board, it's been there for at least three meetings, I think they're pretty close to finishing the site plan, so anybody, anybody's interested, please, you're welcome to come on November thirteenth at seven o'clock to be part of the process for both projects, so I want to show, put that on the record as well. So, if you want to talk about Stewart Signs, or you want to hold to the next meeting, it's up to you, Bob.
I know we've talked about in the past, I've got the impression that the board was all for getting the electronic sign.
I think I'd like to see, you know, how that impacts any of the costs, you know, and where that money is coming from in the budget.
That's one of the things, we talked to Marcus, he said it was in the capital, I believe, we hadn't from the capital for that.
We can transfer money from the... We can transfer money from the, or transfer money from the, to see if the board wants to do that.
No, that, that I understand, but there was other.
Maybe we can reach out to some of our businesses here and see if they'll donate towards it. Danny wrote that up in the past with the other sign. But maybe we can get them to reach out there because, you know, I'm hoping that they would be willing to help out.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a possibility.
So it's probably something we'll have to wait until spring to get done. We're getting closer, see if we have to run electric out there, we have to get a price for electric and everything too, without.
Yeah, that twenty-one thousand doesn't include any of the site work, correct?
Correct, that's not including installation or the electric. The electric could be a little costly. I mean, with an electrician, one that was recommended by Dan, so I did reach out, reach out to them. So they, I haven't got a price from them yet, so I don't know what it's going to be, because we do have all the utilities and the, first, who's going to pick, pick the trench? So I'm giving a price for everything, soup to nuts. So as soon as I get that number, I'll give it to the board as well.
Something we can reach out to whoever, whether it's, whatever business to reach out to, see if they'll, if they're willing to donate towards this cause.
Mm-hmm. I like the idea, I think it's a great idea. I think Jackie, our rec, would utilize that sign a lot, especially with, you know, camp schedules and, you know, Kate, when, you know, you, you said that people aren't notified early enough for camp, this is the best, the perfect way to do it, you know, and.
We can keep the public informed on a lot of things.
Yeah, a lot of things.
It's just another way, way of reaching out to, to get the information out to the residents.
Yeah, we were looking for another way to communicate with the residents, so.
I think it would be a positive thing, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So the trunk or treat, which I mentioned, was spooktacular. I had to put that in, sorry. So thank you to the beautification committee, they're always, they do so much in the village. They'll also, like I said before with Jackie, they'll be involved in our Christmas tree lighting. That which the Christmas tree lighting is December third at six o'clock. Our police department, our, our, our fire department was there with traffic control. It was a great turnout, everyone had a good time, there was plenty of candy. Also, we had people that were willing to join in on the trunk or treat, so we had several people there. And the police department, if you get a chance to look at the pictures on Facebook, they had like smoke coming out of the car, they had the cars all decorated. It was really, it was really cute what they did. And I'd like to also thank Karen Boyle, she came and gave some treats, so that was kind of fun too. So that was a big surprise, but much appreciated. Thank you Karen. So we have to get the newsletter together because Sharon wants to get it in ahead of time. So whatever, Jackie's going to be looking for raffles and, and things like that, she's going to start working on that right away. And I'm not sure, you know, if the board wants to do anything, or I know last year, Dan, you and Steve and Anthony had pitched in for a Christmas tree, so, but whatever you guys decide, you know, let Sharon know so that, you know, that's part of the raffle. Let's see, so Jackie, next week will set up something with the beautification committee. And I'd also like to thank Jeremy Bassow, I was talking to him before the nine-eleven ceremony, wondering if there was a group that we could get to sing at the nine-eleven. And he recommended that Erica from the troublemakers from the high school. So like I said, she's willing to do our Christmas tree lighting too. One of the big things going on here is I spoke last month about the cell service in the village. And in speaking, speaking to, I don't know if Bob is on, is Bob?
No.
Okay. And speaking to our chief, our fire department chief and our police chief, I didn't realize the extent of the problem we have with service here. For years, we've had poor service, but it's just gotten worse. In a lot of areas, there's no service. I did contact a company, now I've been speaking to Bob, but not only that, the village of Croton has issues too. So they gave me the name of a company that they're dealing with. And we'll be meeting the police chief and also the fire department chief, we'll be meeting next week to have a discussion with them. I had also asked Marcus if he could call the cell companies and to see if there's anything they could do to help us to bump up the service and.
Yeah, the response was, here's the email address, send a ticket in and we'll get back to you.
So.
Yeah, it's, we seem to be having a problem with all of them, especially T-Mobile.
So I know the chief said at the firehouse, very bad at the firehouse.
Even Tate Avenue, my house, I get cut off all the time.
Tate Avenue is bad, the circle is bad, most of Westchester Avenue is bad. So this person will come in to talk to us and, and see what we could do to help the cell service and then, you know, we'll come back to the board and let you guys know what their thoughts were on that. If anybody wants to come to that meeting, I can only take one other person, but if anybody wants to come to that meeting to listen to this company, they're more than welcome to come. It's Tuesday at eleven o'clock. Also, I was invited next Wednesday, November fifteenth, there's a tabletop exercise at Indian Point. And there's limited seating there, so the chief and myself will be going to that. And it's a discussion about the emergency plan that has been sized down since all the fuel is on the pad now. So it's with Holtech, the county, and also New York State will be there. I'm not sure if everyone is aware of what's going on over at Indian Point. You know, we've, we've just seemed to be getting some bad news all around. When the governor signed the legislation, that was not a good thing for the village of Buchanan. And now we're into another phase where Holtech has notified us that they are doing a pause for eight years. So there will be no decommissioning activities for eight years. I'm hoping, we're all hoping, that they pursue litigation. I'm not an attorney, I will tell you that. I'm not an attorney, I'm not a nuclear expert. I've been involved in this for many, many years, since the beginning of, of this closure. And looking at the agreements, the first agreement, the January two thousand and seventeen agreement, the closure agreement, I call that the three men in the room, and the joint proposal that was done in two thousand and twenty-one, it's pretty straightforward that they should be allowed to discharge the water. And I know people have differences of opinions with that, but if you listen to the experts, and it's been done for sixty years, if you listen to the experts, it's how it's done throughout the world. In Fukushima, they, they put it into the ocean, the water's treated, it's done in eighteen thousand gallon batches. And what I find very hypocritical from the state is that you have, up in upstate New York, there's three or four nuclear power plants in the Oswego area. And they're still allowing to operate and they're still allowed to discharge into the lake. So I don't understand how that's okay up there, but it's not okay anywhere else. And what makes it even worse is we had on the decommissioning oversight board meeting, we had a scientist who works for Regeneron, and she had mentioned that, oh, you know, I work with tritium all the time. Now, Regeneron is in Tarrytown. So how are they disposing of this? I, I can guarantee you, it's going into, down the drain, into the sewer system and into the Hudson River. So this is a very targeted legislation for one business, one area. So I'm pretty confident that if it goes to court, they should be successful, but then here we go. How many years is that? You know, you know, the law, the justice, the wheels of justice turn very slow. Is that two years? Is that five years? I don't know. So we're kind of in a little precarious position. The board is supposed to start negotiation in January with Holtech for a new pilot. Of course, we're very interested in getting the release of the sixty acres, so we can develop that and replace our tax base that we lost. We're not going to replace all of it, but if it's developed properly, it should extremely help our tax base. So I, you know, to be continued. The meeting I have next week has to do with the emergency planning. The, the site, it is shrunk now from where it's, the security is, so now all the security is in one area. So that's a whole nother discussion and it just, this just goes on and on. I, I'm just really concerned with the delay for eight years. We have people who will work over there, the people that came back, that worked when the plant was operational, that know that plant the back of their hand. And now, eight years, we're probably going to lose that talent and the experience that we have. So I know also, Dan and I were working on a letter to the governor. I do have, I do have it in, in a certain format, but before I finish it, I just wanted to, you know, speak to the board again. I was, I was really hoping to have some time, which was good because we had talked about this a month, two months ago, but I needed a little more time because I was waiting for the other shoe to drop. So the other shoe dropped, with Holtech making the statement that they're on pause for eight There's a lot of things that I think should be included in this letter. I know Dan wanted to see if we could extend the cessation fund or refund the cessation fund or some type of financial, and I think we all, the board all agreed on that. It is the state's fault while we're on hold here. They are, I'll tell you, the joint proposal is very clear. That was signed not only by the village of Buchanan, the town of Cortland, the state, Holtech.
Riverkeeper.
Riverkeeper, our, our friends at Riverkeeper. And it's very clear, but now the state is making it that this piece of paper is really, we might as well just get that, that proposal, make little airplanes out of them and toss them, because they're not abiding by it. So I'm not sure as we go down the road here, if the village of Buchanan will have to pursue legal litigation against the state. And I'm going to say this, it's very expensive, we probably can't afford it, but we might be able to get creative and have, I don't know, a law school or a pro-nuclear group support us with that. But that's down the road yet, but it's, it might have possibilities. We can't sit back, we can't, you know, we got to fight, got to fight the whole way. The anti-nuclear community has taken over Indian Point and has put us in a precarious position. I also want to mention, unit three was originally owned by the New York Power Authority. They took over from Con Edison and finished the development of that plant, so they were operational from nineteen seventy-five to the year two thousand, when it was sold to Entergy. So I'm sure some of that water, or in the pools or somewhere, is part of the New York State's problem. So there's just different topics I have here that I'm going to combine into a letter. And I know Dan was also, when we spoke, concerned about the tritium, the water that should have been discharged into the Hudson. Now it's in the spent fuel pools.
It's just evaporating.
And it's just going to evaporate.
So.
So within that timeframe of maybe eight years, I, I don't know. I, I don't know. So not sure if that's a good thing either. So, but I know the board on July fifth, we did a resolution, we were not allowing any storage above or below ground over at the Indian Point property that Riverkeeper's pushing for. So there's a lot to this, there's a lot of, of wheels in motion here. I have no problem sitting down with anyone going over this whole thing. At the next workshop, I should have this finalized. I will give the board the draft before, see what their thoughts are. And, you know, whatever input you guys want to put into this, but we do have to send something to the governor. I will also be making a statement at the December sixth meeting, the decommissioning oversight board, and I'm sure they're not going to be happy, but you know what? We're fighting for our lives here and we just have to tell it like it is. What else I have on my report? It's been busy, it's been busy. Governor. Oh, I will get back to everyone. I'm not sure about the St. Patrick's committee. We had somebody that was running it for years, our parade committee. Not sure if they're going to be doing it next year. So if not, I'd like to see if anybody would like to get involved in the committee and perhaps work on the St. Patrick's Parade in March. I know it's kind of a quick turnaround, but, you know, they, they had a nice format, so we'll see, you know, if anybody's interested. Otherwise, we're not going to have a St. Patrick's Day parade. And people look forward to it.
I think we could get together.
I think so. I think so.
Continue the tradition.
I agree.
People look forward to it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I know people have their, their family and friends over and watch the parade, it's really, it's, it's a nice parade. So, something we need to work on. And then last weekend, trustee Bob Wheeler and I went to the fire department. Are you going to speak about this, Bob? I'll let you, no, no, I'm going to let you speak about it. Bob, Bob also belongs to the fire department, but we're old timers now. We had, oh, I didn't wear my pin tonight, oh, I'm so sorry. We are twenty-five year members of the fire department, but I'll, I'll let Bob go further. So that's all I have on my report this evening. We will get back to everyone on what's going on with the cells and hopefully we can get some type of resolution with that. Because when the, the police chief and the fire department tells you that they're having problems with the cells, that's not good. That's, but we're, we're working on it, working on it. Steve, what do you have for us today?
Thank you Mayor. Just to touch base, as you were mentioning about Holtech, and, and I agree that, you know, what was decided with the governor and, and what has to do with the water is, is definitely a travesty, but I just want to make sure that the village is focused going forward on the release of that sixty acres, because I really think that that's what's critical. And that's, that's really the important piece for this village, is making sure that those sixty acres are released. And, you know, I'm glad that we met with, with Holtech recently to try to push that forward, because with, without those sixty acres, you know, we'll be in, in really a bad position. So regardless of, of the rest that, that's going on down there, which is certainly unfortunate, if we could just focus our, our attention on that and trying to see what we could do to get that released, I think that's important.
And that will be our January meeting with them as we start negotiations again.
Yep. I just also, I wanted to thank both our police and fire departments for their coverage on Halloween. They always do a great job every year. I encourage all the residents, as Marcus pointed out, Monday, November thirteenth, both AMS and Carbone will be before the planning board. It's your opportunity to ask questions. Both applicants will be there, they'll be able to answer any questions that you may have. Let your voices be heard and hopefully, you know, if we could put that out, maybe Sharon could put that out on our Facebook, on our website, anything that we could do to try to get the residents proper notification would be great. I'd like to congratulate Jackie, looking forward to working with you and going forward. I think you'll be a huge asset to, to the village and looking forward to hearing your, your ideas for these new events. And I also would like to congratulate Keith Douglas, who is not here, but we did have an opportunity to meet with him. I also think that he'll be a great addition to our staff and looking forward to, to having him join, join our team. So that's all I have, thank you.
November thirteenth is a Monday.
Correct. Yeah. The meeting would have been around Thanksgiving, so they moved it up to the thirteenth, yes.
So it's this Monday?
This Monday coming up, yes.
Lots going on. Dan, what do you have for us?
Just to kind of hit on what, some of the things that Sean hit on, or Steve, I'm sorry. Again, thank you to everybody that was involved in the Halloween festivities. I think, I, I know I had a lot of trick or treaters at my house. You know, I think everything that went on with the village, with the trunk or treat and all, you know, all the little things that we had going on was, it was a good, good To hit on the Holtech issue, I think also, in that letter, I think we should also mention that I don't think the village would be, I think the village would be open to the fact of maybe entertaining small reactor modules, if that becomes an option as well. And I think that's another point we should hit on. But I also agree with Steve in the fact that we're looking at those sixty acres, which I think, I know you, you're in agreement with, and I think everybody else on the board's in agreement with. So, you know, we, we need to try and hammer these points home, we're trying to do the best we can. Also, John and Stella and Buchanan Runners Club, listen, you guys did a great job, first time out of the gate and to have that kind of a turnout, and we look forward to that being part of Buchanan Day moving forward in the future. I think that was really all, all I had. And, oh, and welcome Jackie, we look forward to working with you and also Keith. And I think we have two really great additions to our staff and I think Jackie, you are really going to shine. So we appreciate it, we look forward to having you.
And it's all these things that make our community, you know, special. Anthony, what do you have for us?
Oh, wow. So I just want to touch on that too as well, about the Holtech situation. The Holtech situation is, for me, is, is bad. It's a travesty what we, we're going through. Obviously, the, the governor has stepped in and, and really put a damper on the decommissioning. But we need to focus on things that we can control, and that would be the pilot and trying to close in those sixty acres. This, this, the, the stuff that the state and the NRC is involved with is really out of our control. We can complain all we want, but I feel like we need to move forward and we need to start taking steps to move forward. And, and that's why. And, and that's why development in this area is important. It is important because we don't know where we're headed with Entergy, or, or Holtech at this point. You know, eight years is a long period of time. To, to negotiate the pilot program right now is, is not in our favor. I mean, it doesn't, it's, it's bad for us. And, and I am appreciative that the mayor and Dan are taking the time to write a letter to the governor, to try and motivate them to, to help us in any way they can, because they, they should. I mean, they've put us in a situation here which is, is, you know, it's terrible. It's a terrible situation. And hopefully, we can find a way out of it. I, I believe we will. I believe that we'll figure things out as a tight community. We'll get through this, and we will move into the future the right way. We'll develop smart, and we will make good decisions on how to pull the village out of this hole. Those are the things I believe we can control. The stuff that the state and the government throws at us, it's, it's hard for us to say anything in that, in that fashion. I think we're all in agreement with that, but I, I also want to touch on what Steve said. And, and according to the development coming into the community, you know, site plans have been submitted for AMS. They're at, everybody can go and look at it. I mean, this is, this is your community too. Look at the site plans, come to the meetings and make some, some suggestions. Carbone will be submitting site plans soon. That's your opportunity also to make suggestions on the, the, the development project. You know, that's, that's when you want to say your things, that's when you want to come and discuss it. I, I, I think it's, it's an open forum for, for everybody. I, I believe that development is really the only way we're gonna get out of this mess. And, but it's gotta be smart. As far as anything else, I, I don't really have much else to say. I want to congratulate Jackie as well. I'm looking forward to working with you. I think there's a lot we can do in this village, and a recreation aspect for the, for the community. I'm, I'm actually thinking about maybe some fireworks sooner or later. I do have that up my sleeve, somewhere. And, just, you know, congratulations to Keith too, that guy's gonna help us out a lot. He's gonna help Cindy out a lot, I think it's good. He'll even help Peter out a lot, because Peter is overwhelmed. No, no, you got paper all over the place in there. And, and just, I want to wish everybody going into the holiday season a happy Thanksgiving. I mean, I don't, we're not gonna see anybody before Thanksgiving, right? We're after, for the, yeah, so the workshop is after. So, everybody, happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Enjoy it with your families, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, Bob, what do you have for us?
You didn't leave much to talk about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, just talking about the Holtech situation for a little bit here, no problem.
No problem.
Bob.
Anyway, talking about the Holtech situation, it is, it is a gloomy, gloomy type of thing. It sounds bad, but I think we, we'll be able to figure out how to get out of this mess. And as far as the letter goes, you know, I don't know how everyone feels about it, but maybe we should send this letter off to Harkman-Levenburg too.
They're gonna be CC'd.
That started this, and let them know. Come and help us, we need your help. And see if they're gonna do that.
Absolutely.
So, just, just that there. I'd like to welcome Jackie. Jackie, I've been working for the village for 26, 27 years. I worked with recreation for 20 of those years. So, I've seen all the different rec, rec people come in. I've seen you for two years, we're self-identified, it's a big difference once you showed up too. So, I know you're gonna be great for the village, and if you ever need any, anything, any advice, or any, any thoughts of what they've done in the past, or what they haven't done in the past, I'm always there to help out with that, I've enjoyed it for that long. So, one thing I do miss about retiring is I'm not involved in that as much as I was.
Well, Bob, now you can be again.
And Keith, I haven't got a chance to meet, but based on where I'm here for everybody here, he's gonna be a great addition. I wasn't here for that. As far as the Holtech property, I'm jumping back to the, I'm looking at my notes I wrote down here. As far as that 60 acres, I think it's important that we do move forward with that, and I, I believe David is working on the rezoning of that, right? So, we have to get that in order also?
Correct.
And Dave is gonna come back next month with some dates that he's available.
Right, okay. The firehouse brunch, that was a couple Sundays ago. I was there with Teresa, they had about 40 people there. Mike Scott was the, the emcee, President Mike Scott. Had a great time, a nice brunch. They went to a brunch instead of dinners, because the participation's low, membership's low. We need members. And Teresa got her 25-year pin for 25 years as a member, and I did also. It, time flies. I remember joining that, that place, it seems like yesterday, Mike Scott said that. He said, he thinks like he only knew me for a year, but I've known him for 30, you know? So, you know, we can use the help over there. What else do I have here? Okay. I think it was at the workshop that Marcus brought up a, a plan for our capital projects. You know, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about it, but I think it's something we really need to think about moving forward with, because things aren't getting any cheaper. You know, we do have to buy vehicles for all the departments in this village. We do need to do a lot of other things here, so I think we should really have a serious conversation about ironing something out and moving forward with it. Because it's not gonna get any cheaper, like I said, and money's not gonna get any cheaper either.
You wanna do the workshop, have a discussion on?
I definitely think we should have, and, and, you know, sort of keep talking about something and kicking it down the road, not doing something. Let's talk about it, either do something or not. Because it's not gonna be, you know, now's the time to make some moves like that while we can. And, like Anthony said, development's the way to go. You know, it's, it's change, I know some people like it, some people don't, but it's good change. You know, we have to keep our eyes wide open, I've been here for 40 years myself. And I know some people think about the AMS project one way, I thought about that in the beginning. I ride around, I look at other buildings that are pretty big. And this isn't, I don't think this is gonna be as big as everyone thinks it's gonna be, as, as in-your-face, that's my opinion, I'll put that right now. I know what I'm talking about it, but I just wanted to put that out there. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Bob.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to, we just piggyback on, I want to make sure, for the public notice, we, we put both, we both had a planning board meeting, Sharon and Cindy did a great job trying to get the information out. There's a newsletter that everybody receives, it's on our website. She, Sharon does the email blast, or anybody who's registered an email is on Facebook. So, I think we've done everything we can to get the information out to the public. So, I want to thank Sharon and Cindy to try to get everything out as much as possible. And she checks on the newsletters to make sure we get the information out. So, so it's put out there, we try to do everything we can, and the staff try to do everything they can to get, to get the notification out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
And eventually, we'll have a digital sign, in the spring. Okay. Comments from the floor, does anyone have any comments? Yes, sir. Just when you, anybody comes up, please state your name. Thank you. And usually, it's like a three-minute time span, but if you need to go a little extra, don't. I'm not gonna stop.
Okay. Hi, I'm Vito Calcutti, I live on Gallagher Street. I'm here to talk about this off-street parking that you have in the wintertime. It's ridiculous, okay? Last year, we hardly had any snow, we had nothing. That's why you want to sell this ice skating rink that you're selling. And we have to have the cars off the street. Where's the common sense? Is there any common sense? Any comments? You know, I mean...
I'm sorry.
This is, this has been going on way too long. If it snows, take the car off the street. If it's not snowing, for two weeks, everybody's gotta be, you, you people are there for us to make our lives better. This is not making our lives better.
No, this, this is actually something that the board has discussed in the last couple of meetings. So, I'm, I'm glad that you're here, you know, voicing your opinion, because it is something that, that we have discussed, we're looking at different options. And I believe some of your, your, your points are, are well-taken. And we are looking to make a change. You know, it, it takes some time to do that, but...
I mean, how much time we talk, and I mean, how, how, how much, I mean, it's either yes or no. I mean, what other kind of options are there?
We have to change the codes, so it takes some time.
Correct.
And, and we're getting input from different departments, Police Department, Highway Department, and just amongst the board ourselves.
We talked about bringing up parking spaces up to what other towns and villages do. Other towns and villages don't do this anymore. It's a thing of the past. Maybe it worked back then when you had a lot of snow and stuff. We're not having the snow. Like you said, you, you've all sat there right tonight and said, we don't have the amount of cold weather and the snow that we once had. So...
Vito, you must've been here at our, our workshop, because this was a bullet point that was brought up, discussed, and we want to bring it to a public hearing. So...
We have to come up with a plan of attack for this, and I've been bringing this up for a while now. And, and it keeps getting shot down. I mean, that's, that's on record. We just need to be a little more proactive in figuring out how we're gonna tackle this, because, I mean, I, I think it can be done. I think that we should reconfigure how we do this to get it done, but we, we can't be lazy about it. And I feel like the old needs to go. I, I agree with you. I, it needs to be adjusted in a way that works for the DPW, works for the community.
Right, and, and listen, when it's snowing, the car should be off the road, and it should stay off the road for at least 12 hours after it stops snowing. It gives the DPW a chance to, to plow and salt and do what they have to do. That's 12 hours after it stops snowing. So, I, I don't, again, and then if you don't get another snowstorm for, for two weeks...
Well, there are all the things that are making good points too, but I will say, typically speaking, I, I, I'm the one person on this board I think is kind of saying, I'm not sure if I want to do this. Because what if someone doesn't get the car off the road?
You give them a ticket, you give them a ticket.
Right, but so, there are things we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, but you know what? It is, it is.
It could occur today.
It is what it is, I mean, they get a ticket. I mean, the bottom line. You know, um...
I'm just trying to tell you where I'm coming from.
No, no, I understand, I mean, you know, no one...
What I'm trying to say about the 12 hours is, typically, I've done it for 25 years in the village.
I did it for 37.
I know, so you know. Usually, in the village, usually within three, four hours of a snowstorm being done, stops snowing, we're out of here, we're done.
Correct.
So, you don't have the 12 hours after the storm's over.
Correct, hey, listen, I'm using 12. You could do it at eight hours after it stops snowing.
Like these guys are saying, I told them I'm gonna keep an open mind to it. We have to find an amicable solution to this where it's easier for, easy for Highway Department and the police to, to delegate, and, and police does matter. Because, you know...
Well, listen, the police can go around, I mean, like I say, if, if it's snowing, the, the car's there. If, if for, you know, like, maybe one season, you want to give them a warning, or something till people get used to it, or something. But after that, if you're parked on the street, you, you're gonna get a ticket. And, you know, after it stops snowing, park your car there. The roads are clear. I, I don't know, it's like, it's like common sense.
You're kind of argumentative, but we're sitting here as a board saying, discussing it.
Believe me, well, I, I know, but how long have you been discussing this for? Like, did this, is this like the first year this has been brought up? Or has this been brought up in the past?
Actually, trustee Capocotti brought it up, I believe, two years ago, and it was shot down. He brought it up again, I believe, last year, and now we just discussed it a couple months ago.
Okay, so this is, we're working on three years now?
Well, there's been different members of the board here, but, but I think, you know, this year, we, we're really looking into, to see what we could do to make a change. We have a code-red system that I believe could be utilized. You know, there's a lot of means, you know, to get the information out there and get the people off the road. The end result is, we want the people off the road so that the Highway Department...
And I'm all in favor of that. I'm not standing here saying that, you know, the car should be on the road for that.
But the way the law is, you're absolutely right, is antiquated. It's, you know, just because the calendar flips over to December 1st doesn't mean there's gonna be any snow. So, it's, it's ridiculous that everybody's gotta try to park on their front lawn, or their side lawn.
Right, right. And especially, like, after last year, I was just like, I, I have to come to a board meeting. I should've been here a lot sooner than what I'm here now. But at the end of the day, I was moving the car every night, and putting it on the grass, for what reason? At the end of the, at the end of the winter, we had one little snowstorm.
Fifty degrees out.
Yeah, I tore my grass up, and, you know, whatever, but at the end of the day, it made no sense.
Yeah.
So, you have one car that you, you have a problem with?
No, well, I have, I have four cars, which I'm able to get them all off the street. I have to park on my front lawn. The other two, I have one car garage, and the other two I could put in the driveway, and the one I put on, on the lawn, on, you know, two wheels on the lawn. I get most of the car off the street.
Because, you know what, one of the things that we see, and I know people have kids home, they have cars, they just, you know, especially with the teenagers, it's like, it's no more like a one-car, one-to-two-car family.
It's not, it's not, especially with the kids, and they come home from college, and whatever else they, they're doing, and they're still living home, because no one can afford to live out, move out anymore, because things are so expensive. So...
What we're trying to do is, we're trying to do it right. This way, we don't say, we, we don't want to say we're gonna try it, because once we try...
Once you try, it's done, I, I get it, I, I get it.
I will tell you though...
We want to try, there's no, there's no trying it, because trying it is a procedure to change it back if we ever have to do in the future, but weather changes, you never know. But that's why we're trying to do it right now. Whatever it may be, we're trying to do it the right way, so in the future, it still fits.
Well, listen, like I say, it snows, cars comes off the street. Plain and simple, you know?
It is.
And, and, and if your car's there, you're gonna get a ticket, plain and simple.
I just like it, because if we do the code-red system like Steve did bring up, then it brings, it takes the cars off the road for the duration of the storm. You know, day, night, doesn't matter what it is. They're out of the way regardless of what the situation is. They have a, they have a duration, the code-red calls out, it tells you, no parking from 12 to 12, whatever it may be, that duration, nobody's on the street. Okay, then they'll be ticketed, there'll be a warning, or we'll come up with a ticket.
Right.
And that keeps the roads clear day and night, not just at night, because it doesn't just snow at night, obviously. So, we are helping the community and helping DPW, that's the way I look at it. I, I don't, I don't think there's any other way to look at it, I think it's the best, the best way...
See, part of your problem there is, from what I see, is that if you take, if you do it during the day too, if you have people that are not home, that park the car there, and that are not home, then it, it's kind of like a kick to them. Where at night, if, listen, if you had to send one truck out at night just to plow back a couple spots throughout this village, it's not big, to, to, to plow back where cars were parked, it's not the end of the world either.
But if the code-red went out and gave the, gave them a duration time, day and night, to parking, no parking, then they would know that they can't park during the day. You know, if they're not home, then before you leave, you put the car... Listen, we're gonna be creative with this. I agree with you, it's antiquated, it needs to be changed, I've been saying it for a long time. I just wish that we just figure it out now, figure it out, and be done with it.
Right.
And, I mean, the winters are not like they used to be, they're not. And we should adjust. And, and I agree with you, I agree that we should, we should make some, some adjustments to this, this law. It's, it's gotta be changed.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
We appreciate your comments, thank you.
If, if you believe in the farmer's almanac, they're saying a heavy winter this year, but, you know, who knows? Who knows? Last year was not a winter.
And, right, but even at the end of the day, if you put a new plan into system, and, and that's the way it's gonna be, and it's fair for everybody, and it's, it meets everybody's needs, then it is what it is. If it's a heavy winter, fine, if it's a light winter, fine, but everything's in place.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the comment.
Well-taken, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments from the floor? Eileen?
Okay, if you're gonna talk about this snow and the parking, make sure you come to the workshop, okay? So that you can add your comments in, and let the board hear it. Otherwise, nobody hears anything. And then you get somebody coming up here to complain, and not saying that you don't have a complaint, but I would suggest, come to the workshop, and, you know, if you're going to do this on the 28th of whatever, November, the end of November, then, you know, if you have some people here, they can add in their comments. I don't have that problem, but they do.
Yep.
So, and you're trying to solve everybody's problem.
Correct.
I have one, I have one question about the tritium. If it's evaporating, where is it going? Into the air? Where, how is it venting out?
Well, the water's evaporate, the, the water's evaporating with whatever's in the water, so.
Tritium is a, um,
I'm not a scientist.
Me neither, but what I understand is the tritium is, is very close to a water molecule. So that's why it's so difficult to separate it because it's not like the other radioactive components. It's, it's almost a water molecule. So, um, that's a discussion that's going to be had probably at the decommissioning oversight board meeting.
And when is that? Did you say December sixteenth?
Yeah.
December sixth? Twelve-six?
Yes.
Okay.
It's actually heavier than a regular water molecule, so it sinks.
Well, I'm just saying, if it's, if the water's evaporating wherever the, wherever this is being stored and they don't want to store it in the vats that we don't want to give them permits for, which would have a vent, which would allow that tritium to come out, where does this thing go? If the water evaporates?
Well, if they treat it, if they treated it and put it into the river.
Yeah, but they're not treating it. So what I'm asking is, when you made the comment that the treating, tritium is not the water, it's in the water.
It's in the spent fuel pool.
But it's in the, it's in the, it's going to, if the water is evaporating, so what happens to the tritium? And where does that evaporation go?
We're in the same boat as, we're, we're in the same boat as having those big storage containers. And that's why we fought against those storage containers because as it evaporates, it comes up through the center of the container and whatever's in there will, will go around the, the property, will go around the, the container.
So it's coming out of the container?
Well, if, if they had, they're pushing still for the container.
Okay, but that had a vent.
Lisa, do you want to come up too?
Yeah. Lisa may have some insight on this.
Lisa is, has been involved with this and really on top of all the nuclear. Hi, Lisa.
I totally agree. But the water that's in the spent fuel tanks, from what I understand, has not been treated at all.
No.
So it has other radioactive elements in, beyond the tritium.
Yes.
Because when they treat it, they take everything out but the tritium.
So instead it just sits there now, exposed.
Right, but if it is evaporating, as Teresa mentions, is, are these other radioactive elements evaporating too?
Right, so how successful were they in lobbying to get us to not be able to release the water?
Exactly.
Okay.
But how dangerous is it for us close to the plant?
It's, it's, it's what you call political pandering at its best. That's what it is.
Yeah.
They basically pandered down to their constituents, okay, for votes. And I don't care how anybody else wants to paint it, but that's the way I'll put it.
I want Becker included in that. Because he instigated and incited the whole community against releasing that water.
Well, so did others. Higher up than him.
I know that.
Okay.
But it starts at the bottom.
Yep.
And it goes up.
They look at the politics of it too, because we're only a thousand votes here.
Yeah.
So they ended up getting these signatures from up and down the river of people that didn't understand, oh, they're going to put radiation in the water. Well, if you have been going to the decommissioning oversight board meetings and listened to the experts and listened to the NRC and listened to the EPA, you'd understand what the process was and how it was allowed for sixty years.
Well, I don't understand how Latimer can say that he didn't hear any scientific evidence.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, it was like, that was the biggest bold-faced lie I have ever heard. So talk about pandering. You know, him, Levenberg and Harkman, they all belong in a boat too, three men in a tub.
On the Hudson River?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's bad. It's really bad. Um, once again, the anti-nuclear people have, are in the driver's seat and telling the village if you can and what should happen on that property. And that's not going to happen. So there's a fight that's coming. There's a huge fight that's coming, so gear up.
And I, I really think the board needs to fight for every penny from the cessation funds, from all the, they have chosen to cut your ability off to gain your tax dollar from that, that base. They need to do something about it.
There needs to be a concession made, period.
Right.
I agree.
You know, in upstate New York, the Oswego plants, they do have a, um, to keep those plants open because, you know, the gas prices going back. Uh, they made an agreement for twelve years to subsidize those plants to keep them open. All of the renewables, all of the wind power, if you know this, knew the subsidies that are being thrown at that by the federal government and the state government, well, you know what? And, and the, the wind, I, I'm sorry if anybody is, is pro-wind here, but the wind is, is, is actually collapsing. The market is collapsing because of financing, of, of getting the, um, materials, the resources. But they're still throwing phenomenal amounts of money at that. So you know what my thought is, and I'm sure the same thing with the board, you've got money for that.
Exactly.
You've got money to support a community that you have put in, in a precarious position now.
I, I hope for renewals. I do.
I don't think we're there yet. I think someday, I think we'll be there.
No, but, but we do have to fund it because if we don't, it's not going to happen. But exactly what you say, if they can fund that, they can fund turning off the nuclear power here.
You know what? When we had, when the closure first came, we had Senator Terrence Murphy. I want to tell you what a fighter he was for this community. He came out fighting tooth and nail for us to, to get everything we needed. And we don't have that support. We don't have that support from our senator, we don't have that support from Dana Levenberg, our assembly. We have no support with this. We're being abandoned here. So we, there's a fight coming. We're in a fight and we have, you know what? I, I, I hear what the board is saying, yes, that negotiation has to happen. But we can't lay down and let these people, the anti-nuclear people, tell us what the village is going to look like and what's going on over at that plant? No, 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 no. And that's why July fifth, we passed that resolution to say, that's nice, that's what you want there, that's not what you're getting there. And even after the last DOB meeting, the president of Riverkeeper, right at the eleventh and a half hour, just before the meeting was over, well, I still think those storage containers would go there. And I said, well, obviously that's a difference of opinion. It's not happening. We don't want that either. So, it's, it's, it's a crazy situation and, uh, the fight is on.
Okay, um, Steve, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I had spoken, um, I ran into Chief Farrell and I asked him about, um, what happens with the new superintendent, who reaches out to him and whatever. But he said that they have meetings, uh, with the county, uh, police and everything. Could you just give us a little synopsis when you, you know, ask Shane,
Sure.
what he, you know, what they're doing or how they're keeping things, um,
Regarding the school district?
Yeah, regarding the school district, you know, just, um, not anything lengthy.
Sure.
But, um, and we did have an issue with, um, about twenty or thirty kids that were a party going down Tate Avenue screaming and yelling and having a great time, um, at about ten, ten-thirty at night. And I questioned myself whether to call the police and say anything, but if, if it was seven or eight kids, I might not have done anything. But this was a large group. So I got whichever officer it was and he said, up, already here. So I wasn't the only one that called, so don't be afraid to call if you, you know, hear something or if it's a large group and you just don't know why they're out. It was a weekend, it was a Halloween weekend, so they were at a party, but they get together just like that. So it's, um, you know, one of those things. And my last statement is, now will you be putting up the light and shade onto the website?
Um, normally, like, normally it waits to be received by the planning board, um, but if you want me to, it's planning, I,
Well, I would,
The, the Carbone, they gave a new analysis. They got, just got it yesterday, yesterday. I'll put it on the website.
Yeah, I think, you know, for anybody that might want to look at that village and Carbone property, they did submit a light shade study and we do have one person and the public hearing is still open. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that gets on the website.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Eileen, hold on, just to touch base on that party, that was me, okay? Okay, I wanted,
Of course it was you!
It was my tenth grade daughter who had a Halloween party.
Oh.
And it was a cyber disaster, let's call it.
I would think it would have been.
Yes, well, it was supposed to be a costume party that went, I guess, whatever they called Snapchat.